Okay, we'll go ahead and call the Commissioners' Work Session of July twenty fifth. Meeting is being recorded in multiple ways. And we'll be posting on the county's YouTube channel in the future. No public hearing, but this time I would ask if there's any public comment. All right. New lines of business, first of all. We've put out, it's been several years since we put out the cleaning, the common areas of the county facilities. So we put that out a bit a few weeks ago, and the results are in. So we'll go ahead and open those.
And we did receive three. The first one is bond services.
We have bond before.
These services are for the courthouse.
So this will be for courthouse, two weekends, five days a week. Kickery Street, and that's one planer, three days a week. In the Warren County Councilation, Conservation District Building, two days a week. One planer, and the Anx Building, we have three days a week. And. And agreements. And hourly rates.
For occasions, for example.
Right.
We could really need it.
Right, so the courthouse, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars a month, with five hundred and sixty-six fifty-one in supplies. Kickery Street, seven twenty-three a month, with two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents for supplies. Conservation District, three seventy-eight dollars a month, with ninety-three dollars and ninety-nine cents in supplies. Brown's Anx Building, one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars a month, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for supplies.
So what was the total again?
I have to add another five cents.
Let me get the accountant figured out.
And we have the Barber Institute.
All right, Barber National Institutes, who is our current provider.
About sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two hundred.
Plus supplies.
Plus supplies. Annualized price of sixty-five thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. So that would be. Let's see, I guess that would include.
That includes supplies.
Yes, seems to, yeah. And quarterly requested bathroom floors, we can't mechanically scrub at three sixty-five each quarter. So one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars annual.
This one is B and T Building out of Bradford.
There, estimate is ten thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents a month. Plus tax. And then for the quarterly machine scrub, that's one thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. We have a very complete schedule on his end, so we'll do that. That was three, right?
And the other three.
All right, so we'll go ahead and see who can evaluate.
Karen Conchas.
Do you want to approve that once, on Wednesday, if you'll allow us to prepare it?
Hmm, probably not.
Very good. Well, then I guess we'll put her on for.
The first one, yeah, the first.
It's the first Thursday of August.
Yes, August eleventh, correct. Because the conference is on Wednesday.
Very good. Next, reassessments, actually, the rest of it is pretty much the Jeff Anderson show.
I don't know that necessarily, you could attach my name to every element, but we're going to discuss.
It sounds like it's a nice combo.
Yeah.
Three separate lines, but a combo.
So obviously, the county has had a longstanding conversation about the issue of reassessment. The commissioners have previously contracted with.
Alan Dorfes.
Alan Dorfes, he sounds like a science fiction writer from the seventies, to do a study of the assessment values in the county. And I felt like his report was proving fact as far as its position that the county should execute a reassessment countywide. The Council of Governments has done a committee that is pretty emphatically pushed for reassessment. So with that in mind, the goal today is to essentially discuss a draft schedule for reassessment for the county. And I think secondarily, I was going to state that it isn't included in the pack. But I wanted to propose a resolution, essentially adopting the schedule either at this meeting on Wednesday or at the meeting in August, be either way. Just so that we have it written down and everybody's on the same page. I would also state that there are a few stipulations that I include in this, in this package that, that would be incorporated into that resolution in order for it to move forward, which include other municipalities, so. So, and we'll share copies of this schedule, which is just a rough schedule outlined. So we've reviewed all of the previous proposals that have been put forth in order to conduct a reassessment in Warren County. And this is a draft schedule based on those reviews. This is not cemented in stone, as Brian has forwarded us. Like a Tioga County schedule, for instance, is a little bit different. Now, in their case, they do taxes at the same, at the same time as a lot of other counties do. They don't do what we do, where we have both bills and everything. So their schedule's a little bit different. I just wanted to state that it's my assumption that this schedule will be dictated by whatever proposal we adopt. So this is just a draft to give a general idea of the timeline, how this will work. So the first thing I listed here is a resolution in support of reassessment for municipalities. Included in the packet is a draft resolution for municipalities to adopt. We've already had conversations with them about doing so. And again, the goal here is to build as much awareness of the need for reassessment and also municipal support for it. So that will be done in August and September of this year. So we'll send these along with all the other stuff that we're doing. You know, we're also having regular meetings with all of these municipalities on other topics. This would be a good time to get them to sign up for it. I know that, I think that there are several that I can think of off the top of my head that we could count on for support for reassessment. I put here August eleventh for the county passing a resolution finalizing the timeline. If the other commissioners are comfortable with passing it at this Wednesday's meeting, I would urge that only because it would help with the advocacy at the municipal level and also the school district. Because I think the sooner we get them aware of the timeline that we're discussing, the easier it's going to be for them to schedule their resolutions and pass their various ordinances and whatnot that they'd be associated with. Third item on this list is the Warren County School District passing the countywide LERA ordinance and the resolution signing onto the land bank program, which would, which they, which would be required to execute reassessment. Obviously, in the conversations with that with the school district previously, they've essentially said that they would pass the LERA ordinance on, in some kind of trade for reassessment. Although this isn't being done because that was said, you know. My requirement to them would be that they would pass the LERA ordinance and then also sign on to the land bank. And my assumption is, is that the other two county commissioners were probably going down this boat on the reassessment situation. So you can, I can be the bad guy in this situation with this especially because I'm basically telling them this is the way I'm going to do it or I'm not going to do it. So the county would then, the county's essentially going to issue an RFP, which we would put together through August with the idea of getting a result by the end of September roughly. That would then give us the beginning of October to select a proposal. I think that two weeks should be enough. And my assumption is, is that most of these organizations would have a draft proposal in the, in the work to just send us. So I don't think that's unreasonable. The county would have a kickoff presentation at a work session at the end of October. This is after it selects a proposal at some point in October. My assumption is the kickoff presentation would kind of then finalize that we have our consultant. They proposed the timeline, we know the timeline. And then we would start the public relations, a greater level of public relations engagement as far as the reassessment looking forward. At the beginning of January, the contract, by the beginning of January, the contract would be signed. In February, we would essentially start everything. So we'd work with consultant on all of the public relations information, public engagement pieces. And then essentially, the rest of the spring and the summer would be spent doing all of the various data collecting, data mining, data setup and management. Part of this is going to be that the company's going to want an office set up somewhere so, because they're going to be functioning out of it over the course of that time. And basically, that's going to continue until January, February, March timeframe of 2024. Now, again, this is kind of based on the proposals that they sent us in 2014. It could be longer than that. It could end up being where the results don't really set in until 2025. It's hard to say, they felt confident in those proposals that they could get done in this timeframe. So, and the idea being that we send out, Brian, our tax bills essentially in July. August timeframe. So they're basically saying that they would be done by the end of June 2024. And that whatever bills are sent out are based on the new evaluations. Now, that's with the understanding that that year, in October, there's going to be all of the appeals and the appeal process will be, and another big effort on their part. And so that's it. I've included in this links to the other, the proposals that were reviewed, as well as the, the what property owners, the no, and the Center for Upper Pennsylvania Core Home Property Tax Reassessment. So that's, that's the, that's the proposed timeline. So does anybody have any questions about that? Brian, do you have anything?
Yeah, do you feel comfortable with this? I mean, I think it's all going to get dictated ultimately on the vendor that you choose.
What my feelings are, I mean, like the top part or we're doing the beginning, you know. I'm good with all that. Because when we get into the project, like I said, that's going to be pretty much dictated by whoever would be, you know, successful. That's why I reached out to Josh this morning, just kind of see where they were on their timeline schedule. He said they're staying pretty close with it. They allotted a year for data collection out there. And you know, it's probably going to be actually out to thirteen, fourteen months.
Who, is Josh again?
Tioga County.
Gotcha, okay, yes, working a lot, stuff like that.
A lot of that is because of turnover.
Sure.
People out there.
Oh, sure.
He owns the weather, you know, he always fights the weather a bit.
Yep.
But like I said, that's pretty much probably going to be more dictated by whoever would be.
Who, who got their proposal?
Vision.
Was, I thought it was Vision. And they also, the vendor that we use for mapping, right?
Uh, they're actually our current software.
Software, software.
And Vision put a proposal in in 2014, too. Yeah, and to go along with, Brian said that was a different job market. And, and there was a different director in the assessment office, too. So I'm not sure what conversations Karen would have had about the timeline. So you, you know, obviously, you would have a lot of input.
Just, you know, like I said, that's a little bit down the road a bit. That's one of the things I wrote down here, the data collection, I would definitely say a year for that, so. Because you want to get it right.
Pretty good?
Prefer to do that, yeah, take the time that you need to make sure it's accurate, well researched.
I prefer the resolution, I'm uncomfortable with it. As for the timeline, I'm not sure we necessarily need to include much detail in the timeline at this point. It's unfortunate, maybe, that we would have to put in the, I suppose, about LERA and land bank because in my opinion, those two should stand on their own. Not unless there's much ones that tie them together, so.
I think with that.
It's unfortunate, but I guess that's all it is.
Yeah, I, there have been plenty of opportunities to pass those in other scenarios. And, and in this case, I think that the commissioners have shown a great deal of leadership on this issue, you know, all three commissioners. And so I think that in reference to that effort, it would be good for the school district to just simply sign on to those and be part of it. Which is, which I feel pretty confident.
Which is what they had requested initially when.
Absolutely.
We mentioned LERA.
And I haven't had any indication that it will be an issue, so I think it should be fine. So what I could do is work with Brian actually on a schedule, like, rather than like take all the detail out and just have like the handful of elements that are at the beginning. Just basically because I don't care the time from real, I mean, it's not like I, I care about any of that. It's more just that everybody understands that this is kind of the broad timeline that it's going to form.
Well, I think we can continue to communicate as we choose a vendor at the point forward and then, you know, need to share those milestones as well, and, you know, through their lens.
Just a couple of things I had, and I think as a schedule. We do have another flight coming from Eagleview. We want to incorporate that with the assessment. Yeah, now we're tentatively scheduled for twenty-four. And by then, we can bump up to twenty-three and a little, you know, how forward stable is.
That's a really good idea, actually.
Is it, it would be pretty integral for those two to go hand in hand?
Well, that's one thing that I mentioned in here was the idea that when this was done, there was no flight data in, in the system. And that would probably affect the efficiency with getting.
It would definitely be.
Assessment done.
So if that were to be considered, then you're going to reach out and see if they can.
That'd be the first thing, I'd reach out or contact and see if, you know, if they have anything. They'll be for twenty-three, so.
Would we then consider incorporating that to the timeline, if that makes sense?
We'll find your question, but yeah.
So now when they do eighteen, they flew it eighteen, and we were delivered it, and that made like two of the eight trips.
Okay, yeah, all right.
The other thing I was, is we want to consider going to a split building when we do this.
Begin the growth.
More popular and more popular.
Well, so my, my concern would be changing too much all at once. I mean, I get what you're saying, I mean, we've.
I, I know it's a lot, but I think it's something that, you know, the board wants to consider. I think it's the perfect time to do it.
Well, let's have a show of hands.
Let's think, let's think of that.
Let's not make it an elected official show, it's making a public show, it's more.
Just some food with that, so I can start, you know.
Isn't, isn't, couldn't we do a, couldn't the, a work referendum?
Couldn't we do, couldn't that be a work plan to do a work referendum?
Well, I mean, everybody seems to like those now, like that's like a thing.
Are they popular now?
Apparently, everyone's trying to do them. Well, just word really bad.
Let's go baby steps there.
I think it's trying to make it fun.
Anything else on reassessment?
So, once you do the reassessment, is there a way to keep up on it? Or do we just do this again in four years? How do you, is there a way to maintain it and keep up to date on it?
That's a good question.
First of all, the flyover, or the, sorry, the.
The flyover, yeah.
Helps keep it occurring. The other thing is getting assessments hard on rotation, on a more regular rotation. Second of all, we aren't, I mean, it's recommended that reassessments are completely done every seven years.
Every seven years?
Five to ten, really, but for the county outside of what the kind of construction is going on here, middle of the road. So they get cheaper the closer they are. They're not changing very much, but.
I see, all right, I just curious.
And once, in my opinion anyhow, once you did a countywide, you know, basically turn key one from starting from scratch building, that, that seven year mark, like I said, it's not, it's going to be a lot more cost effective because you don't have to do a turn.
Huge problem.
Yes.
I get you, okay.
You're basically updating your market analysis and stuff like that, just to keep your numbers better, so.
Yeah, like we were referencing Tioga County, and focused a lot on, they've done five or six of them in the past thirty years. So they, they do it on a very regular basis.
They were doing it every ten years, and then they got into doing it now because they were a twenty year mark.
I wonder that reassessment at that point is less going out and viewing properties. It's still element, of course, but really, you're updating your algorithm, which at this point, our algorithm is.
Well, and, you know, maybe that is important going forward, think through the, you know, I mean. And the elected board could have changed that at any point, but if we had set up something that created a schedule and a routine.
And had that in the budget for future planning.
If somebody speaks up on you.
This is kind of like deferred maintenance. When we first came into office and all those HVAC systems and roofs and stuff had just been kicked down the road, and all of a sudden, we had to eat the elephant all at once. If we had just maintained them over the years, same thing with reassessment. We had, back in nineteen ninety-seven or something, they had done the reassessment. Then get in two thousand and five, and get now, it wouldn't be that big a deal.
And technically, now with the technology, it should be more efficient just overall. You know, more tools.
Well, so we get the initial one done, I think with the technology, it's evolving every day, you know, so.
Does it, does the flyover eliminate boots on the ground at all, or?
Nah, I want it in the first round now.
Okay, I was curious.
Well, we have to, have to ask the main vendor that we use on the ground how they can incorporate Eagleview content into the assessment analysis.
On, on the second, the second, third, fourth flyover eliminates some boots on the ground because you're, the data gets compared in a, in a software system. And then it like flags properties and stuff.
Basically, like the first round, I mean, obviously, there was quite a few years difference between the two people.
Yeah.
Here, but yeah, that's basically what that is, go through and compares the two and says, oh, now this is new, this is gone now.
Yeah.
Very good, all right. Moving on to the next topic, Recreation and Conservation Authority.
So I'd like to move out at the end, actually, and just kind of run through the land bank really quickly. So. Is the, is the land bank, is, I, so. Pam, Phil and I have been meeting with the municipalities, and we've gotten through the whole. At this point, we'll have the rest in the next couple of weeks. The, the response has been overwhelmingly positive for the land bank, with, with a couple of exceptions. I expect. Clarendon, Sheffield, Youngsville, Tiddy Uds, all the burrows and, and, you know, larger, most more populated municipalities to sign on. Glade, we're going to meet with Pleasant this week, I expect them to sign on, and the city of Warren. So I feel pretty confident about municipal support for the program. And Attorney Schmidt and I have met today, and then we're going to be continuing to meet. We have the ordinance in place for Wednesday to be signed. Basically, the thing that we're doing right now is just finalizing the intergovernmental cooperative agreement for the municipalities to sign, which we, I think we're pretty confident we'll be able to circulate this week or next week. And then they'll start, they'll be able to schedule it and sign their resolutions, signing on to that in the month of August. Anyone's very excited about this? Would you like to talk about it? You don't have to. Okay.
You don't want to get prepared for ours?
Anyway, I just, I just wanted to give an update on that, that we should be, we should be moving forward with that in the course of this month, and that should be finalized. And I think that there's already properties that are being identified by your DA to be acquired by the land bank as soon as the ordinance and the resolutions are passed, so.
Do they have a public hearing Wednesday?
Yep.
Do we need to do a preparation for that?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think that it's all pretty cut and dry, so we've been talking about it for a long time. I think everybody's just, I think it'll be a formality, to be honest.
And it's just getting the public comment on, before we pass the ordinance at the normal, at the normal time.
And you've been going to municipalities and having conversations about this, and so it's not something that's foreign.
There are, yeah, I mean, we've tried very, very kind of conveying what the land bank is because there have certainly been a few people that don't really understand that they hear of a term land bank and, and I think that they think that there's a bank involved, like some folks, I mean, you know, so.
Theory bank.
Yeah, well, they just, I, there's a little bit of confusion there, like they think that the county's acquiring a ton of properties and all this kind of stuff, and really, it's a regional tool, a projection with municipalities. Municipalities really have to derive it, to be honest, because they're, they're really going to have boots on the ground. Somebody have any questions about the land bank before we move on? Phil, do you have anything you want to add?
Nope.
No? Okay. So finally, Recreation and Conservation Authority. So I haven't had a chance to send you a revised proposal on this. My, my intention is to do that further to the next work session, but I wanted to at least have a conversation. And that's why I invited Dan here to help out that conversation, just about next steps as far as the, the issues of kind of recycling and marketing and promotion, recreation, those two topics kind of separately, but joining in as a part of this. So I know it might seem like I've been saying this for a long time, but we, we're going to, we're eminently going to receive a closure certification from DEP. The, the final paperwork's been filed, all of the Ts have been crossed, the Is have been dotted. Supposedly, this month or next month, we're hoping we should get a letter from them basically saying that it's done. We know that they're comfortable with everything we've sent them. We've got emails stating that. So with the, with that, and the closure certification is really what we've been waiting for, for years now, to happen in order to move forward with the closure fund and some of the other stuff that we are doing. So first, the discussion about recycling, which is part of this. This was a kind of an impetus for closing the landfill, was trying to figure out a way to use the closure fund in order to kind of reconfigure the recycling program. And originally, Dan was nice enough to get a grant secured for planning. And we had started down the road of, of trying to do a plan on it, but the, this issue of the, the closure fund and the amount of work that was going to take to get that done was so great that that kind of took over the entire project. And we never really got to do the kind of detailed planning that we wanted on the recycling element. Now that that's done, we, essentially, we're at a point where the recycling program has to change. Like you can't stay in its current state. And a huge part of the problem, at least right now, is this, with the solid waste authority essentially dissolving the, there's, there's no contract with waste management that's handling recycling. So they're charging essentially whatever they want in order to pay for materials to Pittsburgh or go to the recycling plant there. The costs that we're incurring through that process are so great that it's just going to end up draining the fund like in a few years if we continue at that stretch. if we continue at that stretch. So the discussion that we've had initially amongst ourselves and then also with the former consultant, the former person that we had contracted for planning was to essentially shut that program down countywide for a period of six months to a year in order to do planning, to relaunch it after we figure out another way to run the program. I've already had conversations with Eldred Township, for instance, that is one of our municipalities, they're very, um, they're very passionate about recycling, they're very disappointed at the idea that it was going to be shut down for any period of time, that they understood the nature of the situation, and they really want to work with us in order to figure out another way in order to, um, execute this, so essentially what I'm asking for is the blessing of the commissioners to do essentially the same thing that we're going to do before and get a D E P grant, which we feel pretty confident we can get to do the planning, to rejigger our recycling program, um, and that grant generally is a ninety percent grant from D E P at a ten percent match from the county, in this case, we would use part of the closure fund. My assumption would be it'd be roughly about five thousand dollars, you know, for the, for the match from the closure fund. And then over the next six months, work with the consultant to do a detailed plan on it to execute a reconstructed recycling program. The reason I'm asking for this and the reason that I believe that we can get right this time is that the nature of the situation has changed pretty dramatically. There's a recycling plant that's being built in Yuri in conjunction with another company that Dan and I have already met with that is going to be one of our recycling plants in the East Coast, and they're basically collaborating with two or three plastic manufacturers in Yuri in order to provide that material directly, and they've discussed the fact that all we really have to do is get our material and that there'd be limited costs associated with it. And and so I feel pretty confident that we can come up with a net zero, like, some type of program where the, the costs that the county or to an authority per se would be as limited as, you know, possible, but we'd be able to provide more service. Because right now, um, Pam contacted us, I think she was one of the folks that was the, um, I want to say Canary and Coal Mine, that she, she's, she's, she's made multiple comments about the situation, um, cost wise, so. And and my view is, is that essentially part of this planning would be this planning for this concept of Recreation and Conservation Authority that would tie into it, so there'd be a step process in order to execute that. Secondarily, on the recreation side, essentially, I'm asking for a blessing to, um, I don't want to say we, to basically do two things, and I, and it's not something I asked you to decide on today. One is essentially to draft this, the the ordinance and documentation for review based on your input on the concept of this authority, this recreation authority, um, with conservation element to it. The more important piece is the idea of hiring a recreation director, like, someone that's going to be, um, tied in with all of the events, that's going to be part of the marketing initiatives, that's going to, um, kind of do all of these things that we've been talking about doing marketing promotion wise. The thing is, is that we can get a grant from D C N R, in order to do that, it's a graded system where it starts out at a hundred percent paid for by D C N R and then goes to like seventy-five fifty, twenty-five, which you can count these on for the salary of the individual. This is something that I think that we can iron out with the closure fund as far as, uh, you know, could be a seed fund in order to, you know, create the authority, fund the position, even use some portion of it for marketing, you know, initially, you know, in order to mix with potentially other funding sources, um, to to execute something that would be, um, substantive and to to address the, um, the recreation promotion element in the county. I will say that Dan was a part of some of the meetings related to the Kinsu Regional Marketing Initiative, but one of the big discussions we had is the fact that the lack of a county authority-related recreation puts us at a disadvantage when it comes to, uh, dealing with different recreation assets and things that we want to do, especially from a management standpoint. I'm sure that, um, there are a few different nonprofits that are engaged in recreation, and we'd love to hear that the county would be interested in our recreation director, just because they're kind of fulfilling that need in other ways, and, um, so that's basically it, so, so to sum it up, I'm basically looking for the blessing to get a grant from D E P in order to do a comprehensive recycling plan, bless, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
And so, alright, I know you're saying that, that's a, that's part of my strategy. So, and then secondarily is just this idea of A, presenting you with a, um, a format for Recreation Conservation Authority, and secondarily, um, going after a grant to get a recreation director. What do you think about that?
Certainly find the creation of the authority, um, probably okay with the creation of the decision.
Okay. Well, we could, I mean, again, I think that from my point, it hinges on the grant opportunity, so we could, all I'm asking is can we put in for the grant if they okay?
Yeah, I don't see a reason not to put in for it.
Yeah.
I think that's great. I mean, we've talked about the recreation director for quite some time, just even working for, not necessarily the authority, but for the county itself and how that could benefit the community across the board, and I think when I first took office, I asked about that with Dan, so I'm, you know, certainly supportive of that, that side of things and understanding how that can market our, our community and the county assets, um, and, you know, getting a grant would be great.
Yeah, there are certainly projects that we've had to turn down over the years, just because we didn't have that position built.
Yep.
I'm really, recycling, you know, I'm hoping that we can find a private public partnership that could take the burden of recycling away from the county and have somebody else find a way to do that successfully.
Jeff mentioned the grant program to D E P, it's the nine oh one program, ten percent match though, majority of that can be in time, so that would actually save those costs from dipping into the, the, um, landfill fund, using the time of the office staff as a match.
Sure. Do we have a lot of municipalities that are still part of?
Just four.
Four?
Near the rumblings.
Yeah, there's, there's Columbus, Eldred, Elk and.
Cherry Grove.
Cherry Grove, and, um.
Those are just very small ones.
Yeah, I'll, well, I'll tell you, meeting with, like, Eldred, for instance, after Pleasant and Youngsville shut their programs down, their, their polls doubled overnight and and they're probably at this point tripled, so they're funding other municipalities recycling, definitely, and, uh, so they, they kind of waste that as, you know, they conceive the issue themselves, so.
I think everybody is pro-recycling, I think we teach at school and other organizations, but the problem we were having is not only the cost rising, but folks using the recycling bins as their garbage drop off. And then road crews having to spend time, you know, pull that out of there and it contaminates the load, and then, you know, contaminated the load, you can't go to the recycling center, it's got to go to the landfill.
Right.
It's just been a bad situation, really, it's got to find a solution.
Well, and if we kind of eliminate the program that we have today and, you know, pretty much reset the landscape as well, for something like that, then you can get more creative and and maybe engage in municipalities with how much they're willing to contribute, because that also has become part of the problem, is the, you know, people have opted out recycling program, it gets more expensive and more of the burden is on the county and.
It was not an easy decision on the part of the municipalities who bowed out just recently, they wanted to continue the program, but it just was not cost effective.
Ever since the county went to single stream, I think I've really hampered the quality of the program generally, and my assumption is, is that when it's restarted, it'll look completely different than it does now, or there'll be specific commodities that are probably collected, my assumption is, is that the county's involvement will be minimal from the standpoint of there'll probably be, um, some type of warehouse option for the material to just reside at, and then the companies that we contract will pick it up at that point, you know, and that'll be the type of stuff, but I, I don't know, I mean, that's something that whoever the consultant is will work with us on based on your investment system.
Sounds good.
Alright, well, thank you very much for listening to my appeals. There's no hold on to the discussion, under policy procedure, uh, we're going to work on the cleaning security ones. Alright, they're not really still, it'll be another couple of weeks, uh, any project updates besides what we already talked about?
Carpeting in the basement and first floor hallways will start August fourth, I believe.
Are you doing just the hallways?
Just the hallways.
None of the offices?
No.
We do have some problems in one office with the carpet starting to, I, it's probably the expansion and contraction due to moisture and temperature and so forth.
Bring it up the theme instead of with the twenty, twenty-three budget?
Do you see any in yours too?
Not too bad.
Yeah, so this will be part of the recapital budget for cycling for twenty twenty-three.
Well, public hearing on Wednesday, uh, we could probably have the election meeting to approve the polling place, oh, no. That needs to go before the office, you know, so we won't have an election board meeting on Wednesday. The commissioners meeting, um, two, the two confirmations that are on there and then we'll have a third for front four days. The reappointment of commissioners and the transit authority board with the.
They got it, you know?
I have that I have to send you from talk that they just sent me the other day.
Okay, good.
To do that, and basically what they said was, um, they gave examples of different counties that have commissioners on their boards and then essentially they abstained from any voting on match or anything at the county commissioners' meetings. That's basically what they said.
Okay, well, send me your, your info.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait your input, uh, and then we'll have the land bank ordinance. The resolution three two two one on here is to update almost twenty-year-old, um, a base in a recovery fee which related to having a team or there's funds need to go to the A D C. Uh, Act thirteen request for Tiddy Borough, is that you?
Uh, no.
One Kansas man.
Or, uh, Bridge down there.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, there's some mine work needs to be done to the apartment.
Okay, got it, and then C Y S's new case plan, anything else you used along the agenda?
Are you, if I were not revised, um, the resolution on the timeline with Brian, and then once he's comfortable with it, send a few guys and.
Can you find that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anything else? Make the clean selection of the next meeting?
The early August meeting.
August is going to be a whirlwind, that week's going to be a whirlwind.
Yeah, that week's going to be a whirlwind.
And fair.
Oh, it's the same time.
And a picnic.
And a picnic.
Something else, just something every single day, we're going to do it, like, twelve hours a day that week. How's that doing?
Apologize in advance.
Could you, you need your meeting on Wednesday on the two bridge project for Act thirteen, it's pretty straightforward.
How much money are we talking, is it small dollar?
I don't, it's small amount, yeah. I don't have the application right.
I mean, we've done enough.
This would come from the bridge, the bridge, bridge piece of it.
Yeah, and it's the only applicant that hasn't drawn in the last couple of years, so it's, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, any department committee updates? Hearing none, I didn't even know about commissioner's schedules.
Conference.
On the USDA.
USDA one, right?
Yeah.
Um, what were you doing here?
Uh, actually, I had a burger roll.
Yeah. We should, we should talk about that, um, just that maybe this is a little risky.
I'll send them, I'll send them, you know, the schedule.
Because that's, that's.
Car holder, maybe.
Now, I, if you wanted to see the other facility, Scott can, I don't have the key to that, you have to give me the, that's the worst.
We, we have keys.
You have a key?
We have, because of the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Doing law enforcement for the, and we have keys to everything.
Okay.
Okay. And Friday, I want to say, nothing to do, I just, I don't have a call. Anyway, um, any other general discussion?
This is a brief executive session for a personal matter.
Yes, right.
Which is a few moments.
Yeah.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Very good.